Good evening, everyone. It's 5:30 on Monday, September 21st, 2020. And at this time, I'm going to call to order the work session of the Miracopa County Community College District Governing Board for, again, September 21st, 2020. We have one item for discussion this evening on the agenda. That is discussion regarding the search process for new chancellor. Want to remind folks, we're not posted for any action, so this is a discussion work session only. Before we move forward, I'm going to call the roll for the record. I'm unclear if Ms. Munoz, our student trustee, is present on the line or with us. So Ms. Munoz, are you there, here?
Here.
Perfect. I never see your name, so I need to work on that. Okay, thank you. Mr. Hendricks.
Present.
Ms. McGrath. Ms. McGrath, are you present?
Present.
Thank you.
Yes.
Dr. Norene.
I'm here if you can hear me.
Now you're coming through.
There you go. So I'm here.
Okay, Mr. Sarr. I see Mr. Sarr's name, but no sound. Okay, I'll come back to that. Dr. Thor.
Here.
Ms. Nguyen.
Here.
I'm present, Marie Sullivan. Mr. Sarr, again, I can see your name on the list as present, but I need an affirmation that you are in fact present.
Ms. Sullivan, it's Ryan. I'm going to have one of the texts reach out to him.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to go order with a quorum of six at this point, with her student trustee present. And as soon as Mr. Sarr is on the line, able to participate, we'll acknowledge him as present as well. So with that, again, we have a discussion planned for this evening. And before we move forward, I want to just state, certainly acknowledge that we've had a delay in the process for the search of a chancellor. And about a month ago, we terminated the current search, hoping to regroup and start again. We know that when we embarked on the pause, that we also were faced with some of the issues around guidelines and practices of COVID, which impacted that. And now there's been time for people and communities to adjust to how they do business in this new era. As we move forward, there are a few things I want us to keep in mind, and that is certainly there's a lot of public interest in our movement to hire a new chancellor. And I expect that we will be scrutinized at many levels for what we do and how we do it. We want to ensure as we move forward that we're fair and also that we are very transparent in our actions. The other thing I think that's going to be really important as we think through this is how do we depoliticize this process? And what actions can we take so there's not a perception of political overlay? And instead, that we're just pursuing good practices on behalf of and for purposes of the Community College District. The other piece that it's very obvious is that there's a lot of interest from the community, and there's strong community investment in our decision-making, which involves not just stakeholders, direct stakeholders, but a lot of varied constituency out there, some of who are, and most of whom are very interested in being part of our transparent and fair process. I think we have an experience that we've learned from and that we're going to recalibrate as we move forward with some ideas of how can we make this process both effective and impactful and move us forward as a district. I asked that you be presented with materials from the previous search, one being the chancellor profile, the other, a timeline, and third was the issue of who participated in the search committee last time. So without further ado then, given those points, I'd like to open us up for discussion. And Dr. Thor, as the previous search committee chair, do you have any points of view or insights for us as we move forward?
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. I have been giving a tremendous amount of thought to how we should handle the next search. And I totally agree with you, Ms. Sullivan, that the next process has to be very transparent. It has to be very fair to all of the candidates, that it needs to be an inclusive process that recognizes our, both our internal and our external constituencies, that it must be removed from any political considerations or suggestions that there are political situations. So I proposed the last process, you know, including the timeline and the committee makeup. And I really felt that it was a good process that was going to produce a good result. I no longer feel that way at all. I now do not believe that the board should be involved in the process until we are at the identification of the finalist. Or let me say it in other words, until the finalists have been identified. I think any early full board participation or the presence of board members on the committee will leave the process in question. Rather, I think we should handle this in a manner similar, say, to the way in which a college hires a vice president. And that is that there is a committee put in place that oversees the process until the point that there are finalists. And it's only then that the college president becomes involved. So the parallel situation here is the board hiring a chancellor and empowering a committee to get us to the finalist stage. So I think we ought to turn over the leadership of the next search to a professional, our chief human resources officer, George Etta Kelly, and that perhaps we should have several co-chairs or vice chairs, perhaps one representing the faculty and one representing the external community. I similarly feel that the search firm should be selected by the chief human resources officer in conjunction with the co-chairs, again, so that there's no perception of board ties to a particular search firm. Similarly, I think that the committee structure should be determined by the chief human resources officer and the co-chairs, with the actual membership of the committee being appointed by the various constituency groups. And where there isn't a constituency group, another fair and transparent process be identified for holding those people. So as I said, this is 180 degrees from where I was last year at this time, but I really feel, given the circumstances, if we're going to attract the caliber of candidates that we want to, that we have to have a process that cannot and will not be questioned. Thank you.
You're welcome. Not to be flippant, but it looks like you gave a lot of thought to this, so I appreciate your comments. I do have one question for clarification before I move so long in discussion. You mentioned co-chairs. Are you more inclined to see that as vice chairs? Because of course, we got into some discussion over those position titles. Could you clarify what you envisioned as co-chairs versus a vice chair in this regard?
Okay, so candidly, I could be comfortable with either one. In previous searches for chancellors, such as the one that resulted in the hiring of Maria Harper Marinick, there were tri-chairs. My recollection is that the tri-chairs were Michael Crowe, and then the president of the faculty, and now I'm going to go blank, and probably perhaps what's president of the classified staff, but I could be wrong about that. I could also be comfortable with the chief human resources officer being the chair and working with vice chairs for advice and consultation. So I'm okay with either one, although probably the most workable one is to have the chief human resources officer be the chair and have vice chairs that represent the constituency group that kind of serve as an executive committee to move the process forward.
Thank you for that clarification. It's, I'm going to move, thank you, obviously, to further discussion. And Ms. Munoz, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but certainly a perspective from the student body is integral to our thinking, and would appreciate if you have points of discussion and comments at this time.
I wasn't so familiar with the original process, so it's a little difficulty, a little difficult for me to weigh in completely. However, I do understand that there were some conflicts where people did not think that it was a fair system and, you know, did have those ideas of political views. So I do think that Mrs. Sarr's new version sounds very well to me. It sounds, you know, like there's kind of a period, a pyramid of scale of kind of like who's overall in charge of it, which at this moment, she has the idea of the HR person and then that person kind of selecting a few. I also did like that the board is not involved until the end. That is similar to the process that it was for me, selecting my position. You know, I went through the first senators, looking at our applications without even viewing our name or our school. And then from then on, the top ones were selected first to be interviewed with the senators, with two senators.
Testing one, two, three.
Miracopa student board member and Ms. Andrea Banks. And then from there, they're chosen. So I like that system because I do think it's very similar to the one that I overwent, and I think it was a very fair system as well.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your points of view. Mr., I'm going to again do the alphabet piece. Mr. Hendricks, do you have comment or conversation?
Um, I'm just, I'm just thinking, this is drastically different from what we did last time. Just my immediate concern, without really having time to digest it, I took some notes as Dr. Thor was talking. I'm concerned that probably the biggest thing we do as a board is hire a chancellor. And I guess my first thought is I'm concerned about empowering a human resources person to essentially take that responsibility, create the committee, hire the firm. I guess my first thought is I'm concerned we could be abdicating our responsibilities as elected members of the board. But I guess I'm not ready to take that, take any position right now. I guess I'm just kind of absorbing the idea. I think the previous process was, was well designed and well put together. It didn't fail as a result of the, of the system that was created. The problem was created there. I don't know what we could have done to avoid that. I guess I'm, I guess I want to digest it a little bit before I really make any intelligent comments.
Okay, thank you. Going back though, a couple of your points, if I could, Dr. Thor, moving back to you in your thinking of this, when you are commenting on the search firm and the committee and the, and the actual hiring, I mean, the actual hiring would need to come to the board anyway. So in your model, could it be or would it be that it maybe is narrowed down from, instead of us going through 12 or 15, and then going to a smaller process, getting a recommendation of a few? And as far as the committee, having that still approved by the board, certainly with input from the board as to maybe constituency groups or folks that could be recommended? So is to find that balance between board investment and, which I appreciate Mr. Hendricks' point, and your model? Is there some of that in play in there, or is you're strictly keep the board out of it till the end?
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. The most important decision that a governing board makes, as Mr. Hendricks is alluding to, is the selection, the monitoring and evaluation of the chancellor. And so I'm not suggesting that the board abdicate that responsibility at all, rather that the finalist be presented to all board members at the same time. And so that one or two board members would not have participated in the earlier parts of the process and have had some influence over who became finalist or who didn't become finalist.
Okay.
And then I forgot your second part. Oh, so the structure of the committee, I mean, I think it's fine if, just as we did before, that we were presented with categories of individuals that would make up the committee, such as, you know, three people from the community and one representing, you know, K-12 and classified staff representatives, that we would want to have diversity and geographic representation, you know, whatever kind of criteria. But I also think that the board needs to keep distance from who constituency groups select to be on those, to fill those committee spots. Again, just so that we are absolutely fair and depoliticizing this process to the extent that we can. Yes, the board could approve the committee, but in doing so, I believe that will create the same situation we had last time, where it becomes an official committee of the board and is subject to open meeting law requirements and so on. That said, that didn't prove to be a particular barrier for the last committee because much of what we did was conducted in an executive session because it involved the names of specific candidates.
Okay, thank you for your clarification. Moving on, Mrs. McGrath, your point of view or comments?
Thank you. I've served on other boards where we, the board served as the search committee and the hiring committee because that is our job. And there's no problem with the open meeting law because the reasons you have executive committee are per personnel. And so this is obviously a fit for executive committee. And I just don't like the idea of the employees hiring their boss. I'm uncomfortable with that concept. And I'm also a little bit uncomfortable, although I can see why Dr. Thor is a little bit shy about this, but with the idea that all board members are alike and board members are going to make the same mistakes that have been made in the past. I've never experienced that before, and I'm not really excited about this method that Dr. Thor has presented. I would be much more in favor of the board doing the hiring of the chancellor because that is our only employee. Thank you.
Sure. And Ms. McGrath, I don't, I haven't heard this things the same way you did. I didn't hear a lack of interest to hire. I heard more keeping the board away from knowing the pre-finalists and not having some members with information before other members. But certainly, the board would be the one hiring. Does that help, or did you completely hear something different than that?
When we selected a new director at the Central Arizona Project, the whole board was the search committee, and it worked out very well. And we had people that, no one disclosed any information they were supposed to. It was a good process, and I just don't feel comfortable with turning the selection of the chancellor over to an employee committee.
I'm clear, I'm clear in what you're saying. Thank you. All right, moving on from Mrs. McGrath. And once we go through all of this, then certainly we can have a more less structured dialogue. Mr., Dr. Norene.
Thank you. Yeah, just, yeah, I like, I like Dr. Thor's suggestion. I just had a couple of questions about it. Just like, as we, as we talk about the makeup of the, of the committee, the way I guess I'm seeing it is, and help me out if I'm off base, like, we would, we would help pick out the constituent groups, and then those groups would pick out the members of, that would sit on the committee? Is that how it would work? Like, we would say we want somebody from K-12, somebody from, somebody from university, somebody from whatever constituent groups we choose. Do we choose the constituent groups that we're looking for or the criteria of the members that we're looking for?
Dr. Thor, could you answer?
Dr. Norene, the process that we used before is that we proposed categories of individuals to serve on the committee, and we also identified who would be the appointing body. So for example, we said that there would be a member of the foundation and that the foundation board would identify who that would be. We said that there would be a K-12 school superintendent, and we identified the Arizona School Administrators Association as the body to select that person. Similarly, that the faculty would be selected by the faculty executive council. Then when it came to categories where it's not as clear who would be an appointing body, we identified, for example, the Greater Phoenix Economic Council and said that it would be their CEO or his nomination of one of his board members. We did the same thing with Greater Phoenix Leadership, with the Greater Phoenix Chamber of Commerce and so on. So in other words, my point is we'd identify categories of people, who does the appointing, and then those organizations provide us back the name so that we are not exercising influence over who a constituent group, internal or external, would choose.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I was getting at. And then for, for the other criteria that we're looking at, you know, say for diversity, for example, we just put that out there and say, this is, this is what, what we're kind of looking for, or how do we, how do we promote those sort of things?
Well, if, if we're going on the lessons learned from this last committee, after all of the nominations were in, the, we did do a review from the point of view of diversity as well as geographic representation. Or in other words, did all 10 colleges have representation? We, the initial group had, I believe, two colleges that did not have representation, and we didn't have any Black or African-American representation. So in those cases, we asked the colleges to identify an individual, and preferably a Black or African-American, and that worked out very well. So we did allow an opportunity to do adjustments based on the, of the committee once it was, all the names had been submitted. So you may recall that we came back a second time to the board and added some members.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Even then, there were individuals in the community who were still unhappy with, with what we had done, but, but we tried to be as inclusive and as representative as possible.
Thank you. Yeah, because, you know, I know as a, as a board, we do a lot of things well, but I'm not sure the, the kind of diligence and the kind of attention that goes into identifying candidates and selecting candidates, you know, is, is, I mean, we do a lot of things well, but I don't know if that would be one of them. So I appreciate, I appreciate the thought you put into this and, and yeah, like the way it's going.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Norene. Moving on then, Mr. Sarr.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yes, you're coming through wonderfully well.
Well, and I'm putting my nerd hat on here because that's where I'm at. And go back to, and maybe an HR question. Are we soliciting applications that are hand, or hand, but without any particular format that we're requesting them to supply, to provide those to us with?
I can't answer that. So either back to Dr. Thor or Ms. Kelly. Dr. Thor?
I can, I can simply describe what we did with this last situation, and Ms. Kelly might, might have some different thoughts on it. But you'll recall that we had a process by which we developed the profile of what we were looking for in a new chancellor. And you'll recall that that profile was developed using a survey instrument of employees in which they helped us identify the most important characteristics. Then the search consultant met with various constituency groups to talk, to get their thoughts, and you'll recall that he met with the board as a whole to get our thoughts. That was then put into a draft, which we had further input on, and we ultimately approved. That draft then, or then that profile was placed on the website and was also used by the search consultant in soliciting candidates. Candidates then wrote a cover letter that spoke to our priorities in that profile and submitted that along with their resume for the review by the search committee members.
Yeah, okay. What you're talking about there is more of an algorithm in how we go through the applications to determine who makes the first cut. Does that make sense?
Well, it's going to be up to each committee to decide how they're going to go about rating candidates. With the last committee, all committee members received all of the applicants, and then they were asked to individually rank them. And then the rankings of all the committee members were compiled. And then the rankings of all the committee members were, uh, compiled to produce the top candidates and the committee then had a discussion about those top candidates to determine who would be the semifinalist and invited to be interviewed. Does that make sense?
Well, that does. Uh, I'm concerned though that when you get to that point, the board's, um, algorithm, uh, is kind of lost and, uh, everybody kind of diverts to their own ideas of who the chancellor's, uh, what, what the chancellor's, um, ex, uh, experience would be and all that kind of stuff. So I'm, I just want to lock in the fact that the seven of us are going to determine what we're looking for in experience, in, in knowledge and so forth, if I'm not mistaken. And, um, and then we expect a committee, if that's the way we go, to utilize, uh, those criteria in moving different candidates forward. Is that what we're still thinking?
That, that, in my mind, that's what we did before.
Okay. Um, well, we hear different things when the process actually goes on. Um, I, I guess I just want, I don't want to lose the, the fact that, you know, it is our, our decision to make and it's our decision to determine the qualities we want in our chancellor and we don't want to abdicate that to, to others.
Um, if, if I may, certainly one of the items for us to talk about is how to handle the profile. So I think that's a separate question than what, uh, Dr., well, it's relevant, uh, Dr. Thor's talking about in terms of process.
Yeah, I agree. I, I agree, but I, I think, um, that has to be a significant part of the process and I didn't feel we did as good a job as we should have in the last two go rounds, to be honest. Um, so I just want to make that point and I, I understand, um, what's been said before this as well in terms of how and when we get involved as a board. Uh, I don't want to go through a thousand, um, applicants. I'd be surprised if we got, um, 20 that would make it through a, um, computer algorithm to, to weed out those that just simply don't meet our standards. But, uh, at that point, maybe that's when we should get involved. So I'll just leave, leave it at that.
All, all good points. So don't abandon your thinking here. That's why we're having this meeting so we can all put our thoughts on, out there for discussion. Um, Dr. Thor, I'm going to pass over you right now since you, uh, have already spoken and moved to Ms. Winn.
Um, I believe that we had a good pool of candidates and that the process in and of itself, um, with the, the committee that we put together was a good committee. Um, I would have liked to seen more, uh, business and heavier, uh, community participation. We were very, uh, heavy, um, internally on the committee. The greatest thing that I've heard that gives me the, the biggest concern is having the director of HR pick her boss or his boss, but in this case it's her boss. Um, I think that, that just, it, it's one thing to select, uh, staff, um, that goes to the colleges. I think it, that we as a board, that is absolutely the highest privilege and responsibility that we have and to abdicate that, to give that away, um, is just, um, I think that's a problem. And I, I think the other issue that I see is, um, the committees that you want to create and not being certain about the structure, whether, um, Ms. Kelly would be the chair or the, or the assistant, or vice chairs or co-chairs or whatever you want to call the other people around her, um, is that, um, you don't, I think the board should be the people responsible for clearly defining who this next chancellor is, not as a person, not as an identity, but as a set of skills, level of education. Um, we as a board spent some time, uh, this discerning who it was that we wanted as our, um, as our new chancellor. We, we came up with attributes. We came up with, um, ideas that we had and, um, I, when we received all 16, I think it was 16 candidates we had and then we, we downpaired that list. It wasn't until certain people didn't make it that this, um, the process itself was, was always impeccable. It, it was at that juncture though, that we had an issue. Um, I think it's great to say that we shouldn't be political. I think that's, as a board, we're not supposed to be political. We're supposed to be nonpartisan. Um, that being said, this, this failed chancellor search has been used for political purposes. So I think it's great to say going forward that we don't want to make this process political, but this last chancellor's search has been politicized. So then you, now it's clean now, now we're going to start new. So before we go forward, I think we as a board need to have a meeting where we decide before we throw out, um, a new idea, what is it that we're looking for in this chancellor? What is the process? Do we as a board give that process away to someone else or do we actually conduct the process? Um, and I, I have strong feelings about letting an employee just decide who their new boss is going to be and the, and the complications and the, and the pressure that that puts on that employee when we as a board, I believe that is our, our biggest responsibility. Um, and that's all I have at this point. Thank you.
Uh, you're welcome. I have some comments. My turn. Um, when we started, I hope I said this and if I didn't, I apologize. It seemed to me that there are three things that the board has to be heavily involved in. One is determining the process, which is where we've become conversational right now as part of this discussion. The other is certainly the profile of the chancellor that we want to hire and we hope people who fit that profile are the ones that apply. In your, uh, materials today, you did receive, maybe, I hope you've had a chance to, to see your emails, a copy of the profile that was created, that was used in the last go round. So I, unless I, my brain works on a different, um, wavelength, which some people would say happens on occasion, I have not heard any comment that we don't or shouldn't be involved in creating that profile. So regardless of who's managing the steps of, of whatever process, the board is the one, this is what I'm hearing and thinking, uh, that has to be the ones to just define the profile for the people to apply, to be and those that we look for as criteria to hire. So I have not heard anything that disavows us from being invested in defining that profile. And if you're hearing something differently than I'm obviously not hearing, so I didn't hear that. The other piece that I think that is important is the issue of community. So in the previous process, we had two board members and the remaining 20, I'm trying to, I've lost count of how many people were on that committee, were non-
Twenty-two.
Thank you. Non-board members. So there, now we can discuss whether that group was diverse enough. Uh, we can discuss if it was inclusive of our, of our constituents. That again is a board decision. What would that committee look like in order to determine that there would be more involvement? And again, unless I heard something different, I didn't, I, I heard from Dr. Thor's model, and I'm not saying that's where I'm, I'm headed completely, but that somebody who was managing the steps would not be a board member, but the board would lay out what those steps are. So again, I'm wondering if we're kind of throwing everything in one basket that is being interpreted as an interest to, to abdicate our responsibility when that's not what I've, I heard. Um, and then my, so for me, my reflection is absolutely the board needs to decide the profile. I don't think there's any doubt about that. And it may even have modifications from the one that was used in, uh, beginning last fall in that regard. As far as hiring a search firm, we did have the work done by, um, others and by, internally. And then we were presented with a packet and, uh, we got personally involved or professionally involved or individually involved, however that, whatever the right word is there, in making a determination who the search firm would be. Um, as in most of our contracts, we go through a prescribed RFP process and then are presented with the, uh, results that we discuss in a board meeting. I would not see that being any different, uh, in this process than what we do with any of our contracts. Uh, but again, it would be who would do that initial work, what kind of discernment might they look for and would we then be presented instead of with 12 where we do our own individual, uh, digging into or reflecting upon, or I talked to this person versus somebody else talking to another person at a firm, that would all be managed for us, which is an operational function of the district regardless, but the decision-making, again, would have to come to the board. So I'm wondering if we're getting stuck in this idea of someone being in charge, it's not the board versus the board is in, still in charge. Uh, and it's very important that we be as inclusive as possible in making, ensuring that we, since we have diverse constituents and, uh, that we get that engagement in a committee structure that would ensure that we hear from a variety or a variety of people participate in the, uh, the, the process, uh, along the way so that we can ensure not only the transparency to our constituents, but to, um, making sure that they're involved. So I'm trying to both, it, it, maybe I'm talking too long here. I'm trying to both summarize what I'm hearing, but also perhaps counterpoint what I'm hearing back, uh, that is a little bit skewed in my mind because I don't perceive any interest at all for any of us to remove the board's responsibility or abdicate our job. I, I don't think that's where you were coming from, Dr. Thor's. Would that be a correct statement?
That's, that's absolutely correct and you frankly did a much better job than I did in, in describing, um, my thoughts on this.
Oh, well, I, I wasn't in your head, so I don't know. I was just listening.
Well, you did a good job.
Oh, well, thank you. Uh, but I also think there were, you know, it concerns me if there was a perception that we're abdicating our responsibility. That concerns me. It concerns-
Mrs. Sullivan.
Uh, I'm going to finish and then I'll call on you. It also concerns me if there's a perception that we're not, that we would be so narrow in our committee that it wouldn't expand as it needed, it needs to be, I think in this instance. Uh, so where I'm, I'm coming from is a balance between what we did this last go-round with some of the caveats that we have to represent, I think also, in a transparent nature and regardless of point of view on the interpretation of politizing, it needs to come away from us in that regard. And as long as we are, as members are involved, we're going to have that taint. So what I'm hearing also is a need to have a participant, um, that helps oversee the process to take that away. And, and so I think that's a responsibility we also have to our constituents and frankly to anyone who is going to apply regardless of where, where that goes because in the end, this is going to be in the hands of a search firm. Uh, the only person I heard speak differently to that was Mrs. McGrath. Um, so anyway, that's where I am. And Ms. Winn, you had a comment?
Um, I think, so just to clarify, I, I believe that we, we did as a board do a decent job of coming up with who it was that we wanted as our chancellor. Um, in light of what's gone on this year in terms of COVID and shutdowns and, and unanticipated, um, life and, and college and how that's all played out, I, I think we as a board should revisit that. Um, what I, I still, I still believe that we need, I'm not saying that we don't need an independent person. I'm just questioning that our head of HR should be that person. Um, so I may have misspoke or, or, or not clarified that. So I just want to be clear, but, but we as board members, we can, we can say this is what we want, but, but even in, in these meetings, when we're having these discussions, we clarify and we change. And so when you hand that over to someone else and you give that responsibility to someone else, they don't, they can't get inside our heads and know what we're thinking. So whatever structure that we come up with, and I'm trying to have a discussion about going forward and what do we do, what does it look like going forward, is that, that we are making sure that the board is involved at every level, that, that what we say and who we want, um, is the input is there and feedback is given in whatever model that we set up with because I think it would be horrible to go through some process, get to the end and then, oh, well, that's not what we wanted. We don't want to do that again. And I think that this is important, um, that we flush it out. So that's, I hope that that clarified some of my comments that I made, um, Mrs. Sullivan. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so again, striking the balance, we need to determine our structure, the good word, Ms. Winn, structure so that we can move on to get to the conversation around profile. I mean, certainly, and, uh, Mr. Sar, going back to that issue, we have in front of us a profile that was created that we seem to all of us to agree to. I think maybe one of our next steps, let's put process aside right now, would be for each of us to review in our own time in a short, short timeframe, uh, this profile and see if there's any tweaking. And then when we come together next step, we could have that input so we could, uh, comment if we felt this was going in the right direction. Now, this was created by a search firm and it's possible another one would, um, have some tweakings, but that's in charge of that. So, um, I think that would be a way to ensure that we're looking at all the characteristics, talents, skills, reputation, uh, is, is collected in this profile. And I will direct that back to you, Mr. Sar. Is that something that feels satisfactory to you or do you have another point of view on that?
Well, I'll kind of pile on to what I said before a little bit. Um, we haven't had a active discussion on our, um, policy goals, if you will, the outcomes in, in almost three years. And any person applying for a job at this level would want to know what they're expected to accomplish. And I don't have a lot of confidence that what we've got currently in, in our policy meets today's needs. Um, so before we start putting words on paper as far as, um, a profile, I think we've got work to do in determining what we want, um, this district to be over the next five years or whatever, just as we were supposed to do, um, over the time where we just, for lots of reasons, didn't do it. But I don't see, uh, and talking to people who over the years, um, were interested in the position, um, they asked that question and it was probably easier to answer three or four years ago than it is today. So I think we've got that to do first.
So that's a very good point. Uh, and I can't say I disagree with you on that. Um, which then leads-
Then don't. Sorry.
No, that's okay. Which then leads to the, the next thing that we were, we need to discuss and that is timeline. So it's a matter of how do these three elements work together? If, um, and I, again, Mr. Sar, I don't, I don't disagree. It's hard for people to fill a job being- It's hard for people to feel a job being an applicant in the, in my previous life for other jobs. I mean, that's the first thing you ask when you're being interviewed, right? What do you expect me to do? What do you expect me to accomplish? And then you articulate how you can support people or help people to get there. So I think that is certainly definitive. And I know there's some interest for us to begin, and as we should have been doing, but it's been more difficult, to, to deal with the strategic goals. Now, the question then becomes, does that change some of the profile elements that we would want as keeping? So can you do two things at once? Can you be defining those to be attached by the time you start getting to the application process as you look, but still defining the characteristics and talents of someone? I realize that if you want, for example, external involvement in a business context, that would enhance the business modeling or experience of a potential applicant and you'd want that articulated. So I get that, you know? I'm not trying to be an interpreter. But, but those are the three key things that we have to have in order to move us. Process structure, profile tied to desire for accomplishments, skills, talents, also someone who has a strong background in shared governance, because that's where we then move into the collaboration and other elements of that. And then the timeline by which, what, what do we want? I mean, if our end goal is a chancellor by X date, then how do we work backwards from that with all this other stuff out there? So those are our three challenges. And I've heard one suggestion of a different model. Perhaps there's a compromise in there between what we did and what we need to go forward, given where we've been. Also, we can push the strategic conversation, goals conversation a little harder so we can make sure the profile works. And then tweak all of that with, but, but perhaps it's a timeline, too. So those are all still out there, but we have to put formation to that integration. And that's why I think this conversation is good. So I want other comments from people. I can go back down the list, or we can try to attempt to do this ad hoc. So it's a little harder when we're not together. So I will, let, let's just start, go around again. Mr. Hendricks?
I'm still pondering everything that's been said. I still have a concern with using the current director of HR to take so much responsibility. If we want somebody with that skill set, that's a hired person. They're going to get paid. They're not going to work for free. Perhaps somebody with that skill set could be hired to, to fill the gap we're talking about. There's one thought. A second thought, it sounds like there's a lot of ideas here that probably need to be considered in a, in a broader, broader scale, maybe a list of procedures that we're going to use to get to another schedule. Just throw the idea out there. Would it be worth considering maybe some subcommittee of the board? Not to take anything away from the work Dr. Thor has done. She obviously put a lot of time into this and thought it out. Maybe worth having a couple of people on the board work together and come up with an idea that takes into consideration all the points made today and maybe try to make some presentation to the board based on that, just as an option, just to throw out the idea.
So what, to be clear, what you're suggesting is a small group, maybe three out of, out of the seven, to, to ponder all these three things and put something on the table in a more thorough context? Is that what I'm, I heard you say?
Yeah, I'm just throwing the idea out there. Maybe a couple of people, two or three with maybe different viewpoints could try to consider all these things and try to come up with something that might be palatable. I think we need to get some consensus on this that isn't a majority, but basically the entire board needs to agree on whatever happens next. We've got to be sure we get this right and we don't have the challenges we had in the last one. I spoke with two members of the committee that reached out to me today. And so I had brief conversations with two people that were on the committee. And I think everybody agrees that we need to either regain or retain public trust in this process of what we're doing. And we can say it's going to be apolitical, and that's a neat concept, but every person has political beliefs. Everybody has those beliefs. And this idea that you get elected to a nonpartisan board, you don't check every belief you've ever had at the door before you come into the meeting. Every decision you make in your house and your office all day long is political in some sense because that's who you are. And that's, that's still going to happen to some degree. But there, there is concern, at least from the two people that reached out to me, and frankly, I don't even know them. They just called me out of nowhere to express concerns of moving forward. And I imagine some of the rest of you probably heard from the same people. I can't imagine they only called me. But there's concern of how we're conducting ourselves and how we're, how we're moving
I, I agree. I think that's why, number one, we have to be transparent and inclusive. I think those are going to be two critical elements. And clear, I mean, clear. Thank you. Come back to that. Mrs. McGrath?
Thank you. I didn't mean to indicate that the CAP board did not hire a search firm. They did hire a search firm and then the board members were the ones that sifted out the finalists. And also, I'm wondering if we're thinking about the fact that our board makeup is going to change in a little over 40 days? And if we might want to take that into consideration? I couldn't draw up the timeline on my computer. For some reason, didn't want to find that for me. So where would we be in 40 days on this search idea?
Thank you, Mrs. McGrath, for your question. The timeline more or less gave out the, you know, you start this day and you have so, so many things you have to go through to get to that day. And I think one of the things for the board to consider, certainly in the timeframe as we're going through this process of structure, you know, and, and other things, is do we want a search to begin prior to November 3rd or after November 3rd? Depending on the election results, to your point. And if it starts when board members take office in January, new board members included, then do we wait until January? Seems to me that might put us in the hole a little bit if our goal would again be July of 2021. So it is conceivable that we could spend, using some of Mr. Hendricks' idea, getting our pieces, ducks in a row with a blend of goals and conversations, to your point, Mr. Sarr, having a small group kind of put this all on paper to bring for further discussion, though I think Dr. Thor did a good job of putting an idea in all of our heads this evening. And then it's beginning an actual let's go after November, the election in November, which would be considerably similar to the timeframe we used or intended to use before. So, Ms. McGrath, it would be probably starting in November and being able to conclude with a new chancellor in July of 21.
I would hope that the newly elected board member would have input, even though they're not installed until January.
No, I get it. I think that's reasonable. That's why I was saying November might be a good time.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Dr. Norene?
Thank you. I guess, I guess actually listening to everybody, I guess I'm a bit, a little bit confused as to what the role of the, of the chair of the committee is. I mean, was my understanding, they're kind of the point person and they kind of help coordinate the, the meetings and they coordinate the committee? They don't actually pick the person that we're going to hire. But that seems to be what, what everybody seems to be thinking that the chair of the committee is doing is selecting the chancellor. But I guess, I hope I'm wrong, but I wouldn't imagine that the chair does that and just kind of facilitates the committee so that we do have somebody in charge. I'm not, you know, I don't object to, to what Mr. Hendricks was saying about even having somebody from the outside do it. I'm just, I don't, I don't know. It just, it just seems like we're making the, the chair of the committee the one who's actually doing the hiring. And I don't think that's, I don't think that's the case. But I think there's plenty for us to do. You know, as, as Sullivan said, you know, we want to look over this, make sure we have the, you know, make sure that we agree on the qualifications and the experience and that sort of thing. And then I think that's, that's the magic of a committee. You get a lot of different ideas that, that are going to, to bring together and coalesce around what we, we are asking them to do. And so I don't think one voice is going to dominate. Hopefully, one voice won't dominate the whole selection. But yeah, so that, that was just my, my point. I think we have plenty to do and we need to start working on it as soon as possible. Again, refining what, what we're looking for, making sure that we have a good idea of what, what we're, we're searching for and what we're expecting of the committee, what we're expecting of the new chancellor, and what our expectations are of the, of the whole process. And in the meantime, we should be looking at putting together a committee and start that search.
Thank you, Dr. Norene. To your point about the role of the chair, I did, I probably said it less well than you and that was similar, that I think there was a perception that it was a comment that the chair made the decisions and would do the hiring as opposed to facilitating. To your point again, and then Mr. Hendricks suggested hiring someone. I, I think that is the role of the chair, if we go back to the role descriptions that we've, were all given last time. And that is, the chair really is the facilitator of the process, not the decision maker, though they're the primary point person. And that's something to clarify as well. And so thank you for your comments. Mrs. McGrath, I was looking at the last timeline, last September 24th, so we're actually a week ahead. The board held its work session to discuss process and timeline, but there had been more work done prior to. And then October, it was putting together the search committee, et cetera, et cetera, with the actual November 4 deadline. I mean, comment, kind of putting things out in a different way. So we could essentially follow a similar timeframe for whatever our next steps are and still get us to July 1, 21, if you wanted to take a look at that again. Mr., Dr. Norene, any other comments before I move on?
No, thank you.
Sure. Okay, Mr. Sarr, back to you again.
All right. Well, I'm thinking here as well, and, and I've thought about this for a while. I'm not sure that this is the time to be looking for a new chancellor. There's lots of reasons for not doing that now, not to leave.
By now, you mean?
This year.
As opposed to?
This year.
So all of 2020? Okay.
That's right. For a number of reasons, not the least of which is we have somebody in place that is keeping the doors open and students educated, even though it may not be the one we're looking for when we finally figure out what that is. Secondly, we got other issues out there that the board's dealing with. And I think anything that we do in terms of recruitment is going to be tainted by our board. And we all know what that's all about. And I think a year to get things, you know, behind us, if you will, and we'll have a new, a new board makeup in January or sooner. And I, I think just a timeout here might not be a bad idea, since we're, we're not in any trouble right now from the chancellor's position that I can see at least. But I do think that we would be in a better position if the board does its work in the meantime, to put together a much better package for those out there that are interested in positions to apply for.
Got it. That's a good observation, too. Thank you. Dr. Thor, I'm back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. I was busy making notes on the things that Mr. Sarr was sharing. I absolutely agree with Mr. Sarr that we need to spend some time setting some goals. My criticism of the profile that we used the last time is that it was largely a statement of, you know, the rather routine qualifications that we're expecting. You know, that you be a leader, that you have a doctorate or at least a master's degree, that you understand budgets and do this and that. What is typically in a profile of this level, a profile for a position at this level, is a statement of challenges and opportunities that a district is facing. Had we had challenges and opportunities in this document, this last document, this last profile, we likely would have asked the candidates to write to those challenges and opportunities to provide more structure in what their cover letter should be. So I agree that it would, it's worthwhile to spend time talking about challenges and opportunities or goals or strategic directions or whatever we want to call them. And frankly, spend less time on, you know, this long list of bullet points of all the things we expect the person to do in the job. Regarding who chairs the committee, it seems to be that if the board does not wish for the chair to be an employee, that we could consider a community member. But in doing that, we would have to be sure that we hire a search firm that will drive the process. So in my experience, I have been involved with search firms that are pretty prescriptive. You know, at this meeting, we're going to accomplish this and at the next meeting, we're going to accomplish that. And this is how we're going to rate the candidates and, you know, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We did not have that with this past search firm. They didn't have a lot of experience, frankly, working with higher education and specifically with community colleges. And so we're not driving, you know, agendas, tools and those kinds of things. So, so I think we could improve on the profile with challenges and opportunities. I think we could consider a community member as chair if, if we, we have a search firm that's really clear about how to get from here to there. I think that Mr. Sarr's suggestion of a timeout is very much worth our discussion. I think, given that we are having a new board, given that the pandemic appears that it's going to be with us for a while, continuing to comp, complicate our ability to discuss things and interact with the community and with constituencies. But if we were to decide to continue, continue with an interim for a longer period of time, I do think that it's important that we make clear to the interim what we would expect to be accomplished and what authority the interim chancellor has, particularly related to filling leadership positions and those kinds of things.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Ms. Nguyen, before I make my comment, further comments?
Okay. I think that the timeline that we used this last time was a good timeline. And a lot of the work, we're not starting And a lot of the work, we're not starting from scratch, so a lot of the work that we're doing in terms of the profile, I agree that i- if you don't give this person specific challenges, opportunities, goals, and you don't clearly define what it is that we're looking for, I like the idea of, of them actually taking our, actually taking our challenges and issues that we have, and how would you help solve those? I think that's, that's a great, something that we should include in the process. The transparency was missing in the last process, and I, and I believe that that is critical for building trust and integrity with the community. I also believe that we, we are going to, we could use this time, Mr. Hendricks' suggestion, several people, I don't think there's as much to do as there was. I think we need to fine tune and define the process, but if we, if we started in November, using this time now for a smaller group to get together, I think that that we could still have in place by July of next year. And I agree with Dr. Thor that the COVID is creating some issues in terms of people getting together, community input and all those things. The, the last thing is whoever the search firm is doing the process, if we do use an outside community member, I think that obviously is something that we have to be, again, transparent about and, and bring a lot of clarity to, and make sure that everyone on the board has buy-in. And so that is all I have at this point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I've heard, so I'm going to try to move us forward and let's see where we are. A couple of things from my standpoint, too.
Shut that, you can come in, but.
And that is, one, I think our timeline is, is something we have to look at. And I do agree with the strategic goals conversation that has to happen. And one thing I do know about that is that process also takes a little time. In some state, in some instances, it takes a lot of time, but certainly to embark on that next week, for example, and end up with a decision with, unless we met almost every day, which I can't do, is, it takes more than a couple of weeks. Now, also, I know the district is talking about goals, and we're, we actually had that as a tentative discussion. We not, are not going to do it tomorrow, but we can do it certainly in a work session moving forward, Dr. Gonzalez. But with that, I think that's critically important to get at some of the points that we're all trying to make about the, the individual we want to hire. And so some of my thinking has shifted as a result of this dialogue, and that is, I think it would make sense to do that. I think that would give us a more robust and discerning profile, or certainly framework for a profile, that would then get us to the result that we want. I also understand that, yes, we're moving forward right now, and there's no reason to not keep us moving forward, to your point, Dr. Thor, about our leadership. So that's certainly something, again, we can discuss as a board, but in a different model. Then, I'm trying to get all my thoughts in a row here. So, so then it may, it would make sense, I think, to do that first. And our process essentially worked last time, but I think it may be premature to define who would serve on that search committee to some degree until we know what it is we want in a person to lead, because there are different ways that constituencies would want to define or interpret those perspectives as well. So, and then, of course, the elephant in the room is we have an election coming up, which to Mrs. McGrath's point, brings on new board members, perhaps, well, we know one for sure, and we don't know where we'll be with the other. And that then puts us in a whole different ballgame, is it would be a new board who would be doing the hiring or new board makeup, I should say. So what I would like to suggest is that we move pretty assertively with the strategic goals conversations to frame out challenges and opportunities and how those are impacted by our policies. Number two, as we do that, be thinking of, and creating a timeline that would involve new board members in their official capacity, be sketching out a process, and, and I think it's reasonable for us to put a couple people's heads together to think what might that look like. But on the other hand, not get so formalized in it that it becomes the be all, end all. Then, from there, we could begin to figure out our search for a search firm, meaning it might be colored by the perspective we have on the strengths that we're looking for in a leader that both understands the community involvement and investment and, and modeling, business modeling, coupled with shared governance. So where does that leave us? So this is what I would like, so I'm going to propose that we begin those conversations around goals, challenges and opportunities, and we begin to set up some sessions to do that well. And I'm going to suggest that I have an opportunity to mull over the two to three-person mini committee at this point, but I think it's premature, and then draft out a timeline that might have some very first steps beginning in November after the election, but with a majority of the work to begin in January. So that's where I am in this conversation, from what I've gleaned from it. Any major objections? So I'm going to take the silence as golden. Well, how about if I do this, then? Is there any other comment for the good of the order, Ms. Munoz, or anyone else?
Not for me. I believe everything that, you know, I kind of had an idea was brought up and said, you know, I don't think necessarily has to be the HR person, but just someone overseeing it. And I guess I did get my own wires mixed up, but yeah, my idea was that a committee would just kind of funnel through the initial applications and bring forth, you know, the final three or the final whatever amount for the board to select. So that was my ideas.
You know, what could be helpful, Ms. Munoz, and, and I'll ask Ms. Macias to do this. You have some of the material from the previous search, but perhaps there's a little bit more somewhere that could give you a little deeper sense of what actually was accomplished by the committees and others in terms of a timeline, in terms of their responsibilities, so that you're up to speed with us as well. I think that could be helpful to you, but I certainly appreciate your comments and would tend to agree that the facilitator, as the chair is facilitator, is the primary role, and where could we go with that? So if, if no one, again, objects, I will try to capture some of these key elements with Ms. Macias, who took our notes, and put something together as we begin to look at next steps, recognizing that, that we all have an interest of time and accomplishment, there are still many steps or several steps to, to take into account. And the primary one to help us frame our profile and our interest tied to goals, challenges, so we can get to challenges and opportunities and help that define some of our next steps, recognizing, again, this is an election year, we're very close, 40 days out, as Mrs. McGrath reminded us, from an election, and we want to be able to accommodate those results. So I will do my best to capture that, at which point you can all tell me I did a great job. And then we will call further sessions, and eventually, of course, would have to have an e-session to address some of the conversation that you brought up, Dr. Thor, around the interim chancellor's role. So if we're all aligned with that, and we're clear, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. We stand adjourned.